Okay, good evening and welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board for Wednesday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Present this evening, we have Tom Chinaki, Clerk of the Board. We have Steve Watroba, Vice Chairman. We have David Durgan, Member. We have William Scanlon, Acting Town Planner. We have our fifth member on the phone this evening, Richard Clark, and myself, Guy Horn, Chairman. First item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Constitution of America. I am not a physical individual. I am just a member of the Constitution.
Okay, next item up under New Business, Approval of Minutes from November ninth, Meeting, two thousand and twenty-two. Did everyone have a chance to look at those meeting minutes? And would somebody like to make a motion to approve them or amend them?
Make a motion to approval?
We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November ninth. Do we have a second?
A second now.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Oh, actually, we've got to do roll call votes because we have one member on the phone, sorry. So, Mr. Chinaki?
Aye.
Mr. Durgan?
Aye.
Mr. Watroba?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Uh, Richard Clark, aye.
And Guy Horn, aye. Okay, so that's unanimous. Uh, next item on our agenda for this evening is A and R Plans. We have one for DJT Properties, A and R Plan for one-five-three Oxford Road. And I believe the engineer is on the phone with us. Jeremy, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, hi, this is Jeremy from engineering. Um, this three-story building is, uh, we have an existing house, uh, thirteen and a half acre parcel on Oxford Avenue. Um, we're going to create two parcels with that, one lot, this existing house on it, and then the other lot. It's basically a landlocked parcel that's going to go to the gravel pit, which is owned by Three R's Realty Corporation in the back. Um, the existing house, it has about two acres and the remaining land is about eleven and a half acres to go to the, the remaining, uh, gravel pit.
One is, um, five E topography and five J profiled existing grades, but nothing's really changing here. The house is staying the way it is and the additional, the new lot is being, it's going to be combined with, with the other lot for the gravel pit, you said?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Clark?
Uh, Chairman, I have a question in regards to the, uh, form, formats presented here. Uh, obviously, they're all, everything is checked off or almost everything. Uh, there's no indication in terms of number four already taxes paid. Uh, I, I just want to bring that up and then recall sometime ago, a member of the Board of selection escorted the planning board that had approved somebody's plan to do something when in fact that person was in arrears when you got to their taxes.
Yeah, did, did you?
Yeah, I did confirm with the treasurer that they are current with taxes now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Bill.
So that would check off number four. And number three is a plan shall be submitted at a regularly scheduled planning board meeting, which is tonight, so I would say that that's, can be checked off also?
Uh huh.
Yeah, so that would just leave the two waivers, the one for the topography and the one for the profile of the existing grades. Uh, the map, the plan has a statement on it, hundred percent uplands.
Question for you, engineer. You're combining this to your gravel pit, what's your gravel pit zoned as?
Industrial.
Industrial, so you'd have to bring this to town meeting?
Light Industry eighty-seven.
Because your lot is on residential thirty.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
So you'd have to bring this to town meeting before you switch it over to your gravel pit?
Uh, I, I have no, I have just doing the property line survey. Obviously, if they want to do any more gravel pit operations, that's a separate permit in itself. If they want to expand their gravel operations to this property, that's, that's another permit.
So the property line is the zoning line, correct?
Correct.
Yes, that, that's how it was created, yep.
So the eleven acres is right now, for right now, is staying in residential thirty and the gravel pit will be in light industrial eighty-seven?
Yep, yep, correct.
Okay.
I think the intent of this is just so they can have a buffer and transfer. They own both properties right now anyway, obviously, so they're just gonna, you know, give the eleven and a half acres to the Three R's Realty Corporation. But obviously, any work, further work would be, that would be a separate permit anyway.
Okay, any other questions from the Board?
No.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion on the two waivers?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the two waivers as requested.
Okay, so we have a motion to grant?
Mr. Chairman, I have a second now.
We have a motion and a second to grant the two waivers for the A and R Plan of Land for one fifty-three Oxford Ave. It's under Dudley Tax Map two twelve, parcel number five. Uh, let's have a roll call vote, Mr. Chinaki?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Clark?
Richard Clark, aye.
Richard Clark, aye. Mr. Durgan?
Aye.
And Mr. Watroba?
Aye.
And myself, Guy Horn, aye. So it's unanimous on the waivers. And would somebody like to make a motion to approve the A and R Plan of Land for one five-three Oxford Avenue, Dudley, Mass? Once again, Dudley Tax Map, number two twelve, parcel number five. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call vote, Mr. Chinaki?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Durgan?
Aye.
Mr. Watroba?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
And myself, Guy Horn, aye. Unanimous. Okay, so we have to sign two, two paper copies and one?
Yep.
Jeremy?
Yeah? What's your, Phil? Phil, uh, as far as my signing, is how, uh, how is going to work the mechanics of that out?
Uh, we don't need you signature, we have a majority already. Just a simple majority.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
Jeremy, I'll leave the mail out with two in the conservation office. If you'll have somebody come by and pick it up.
All right, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Is Jeremy still with us or is he also?
Uh, Richard is.
Richard's still with us?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, next item on our agenda. Was this a, was this a published?
It's not a public hearing.
Okay, so we don't have to?
It's just an acceptance of the plan by the planning board and discussion of the plan if you want to.
Preliminary submission?
Yes.
So we don't have to, we don't have to wait to take this up at seven fifteen?
No.
Okay. All right, so the next item on our agenda is a preliminary submission for conventional residential subdivision, Sawmill Road LLC, map one thirteen, lot sixty-five, thirty-five Sawmill Road.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to recuse myself from the meeting, uh, because I'm going to be the representative for Sawmill Road LLC.
Okay, no worries.
I have a couple of copies of the plan, if you'd like me to fill again.
Yeah, sure.
Hello?
Richard, do you have the plan in front of you?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so, um, many of you may recall that I was here previously and showed a subdivision on the same, uh, proposed subdivision. It was not officially, uh, brought forth before the Board, but just kind of wanted to get an idea what the Board's thinking was on having a subdivision here. Before we get into this, though, I wanted to just mention, uh, some notes about the Dudley real estate market. Being our licensed real estate agent, uh, we love our numbers and I was looking at what the market was like in Dudley for single-family homes. And, uh, we love our statistics and there's a thing in real estate called the absorption rate, and it's a metric used in the real estate industry to gauge how well homes are selling over a given length of time and how quickly the listings as they come on the market, how long they're on the market before they sell. Uh, it's calculated by taking the average number of sales per month and dividing it by the total number of available properties. So, an absorption rate of under fifteen percent is considered a buyer's market and over twenty percent is considered a seller's market. Right now, uh, Dudley's current absorption rate is at sixty-two percent. That's actually up nine percent from the same time last year. Uh, the approximate month's supply of inventory is one point six months. What that means is theoretically, if no new properties came up for sale on the market starting today, in one point six months, we would actually run out of houses to buy in Dudley. Listing units on the market for November twenty-eighth, which is when I ran this report, uh, there were only seventeen single-family homes available for sale in the town of Dudley, and the average listing price was four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. To sum all of this up, uh, the current situation in Dudley, like much of the area here in central Massachusetts and other areas, uh, we need more housing, there's a lack of housing. So, uh, just a quick background on the property history, uh, this property has been in my family since my parents immigrated to this country, uh, shortly after the close of World War Two. My father worked at American Optical and back in the nineteen fifties, he purchased this small farm on Sawmill Road. They continued to operate it as a small vegetable farm and they also actually harvested hay there until my father passed away in the mid-seventies. After my mother passed away, uh, my siblings and I decided it would be time, a good time to develop the property into a residential subdivision. So we actually, uh, in two thousand and five, we engaged the services of Paris Surveying and then while we were in the process of doing that, the subprime mortgage market collapsed and of course, the rest is history, we all pretty much know what happened there. The zoning of that area is residential fifteen, so it's only a minimum lot size requirement of fifteen thousand square feet. And there is town sewer on Lawrence Road and we were planning on an approximate fifteen lot subdivision. Uh, part of that was to be a cul-de-sac consisting of eight lots on this, uh, the parcel you see to the right, we're proposing five lots tonight. Some Board members may recall, uh, the conceptual plan I informally presented to the Board back in May of this year. At that meeting, uh, Dan Edmundston, who was current, at that time, he was still a current member of the Board, he had, uh, said that personally, I'm against something like this, I think it destroys the whole nature of the area. Uh, he also made it clear that as long as I met all of the requirements for the subdivision regulations, he would not be in a position to vote against approving it. I just wanted to say that I actually agree with Dan's opinion because I live in the area and, you know, I have a very close tie to this, this property being that it's been in my family for so long, I know a lot of the people that live in that area. Um, you know, we have a, our responsibility to other family members to not just continue to pay taxes on it and have it sit there and do nothing. So, we'd like to try and move ahead with a subdivision that might be the, you know, more palatable to everybody who lives in the area and, uh, still be profitable for my family. So, the rules and the regulations governing the subdivision of land in the town of Dudley, Massachusetts, uh, were enacted for the purpose of protecting the safety, convenience, and welfare of the inhabitants and to preserve the suburban character of the town by regulating the layout and construction of ways and subdivisions. The reason why I mentioned that is because, um, basically, it's, these subdivision regs are telling us that the Board has certain leeway here with the way that we govern the layout of subdivisions. Back when I came here with that informal proposal, uh, I was here with Tom Revain, uh, the builder of Lyons Estates, and Mr. Revain stated at that meeting that in order to make the project viable and to cover the expense of constructing the four-hundred-foot cul-de-sac to a standard that would allow it to be accepted as a town road, we would need to get all eight lots out of it. In other words, if we lost even one lot, his feeling was that the cost of the infrastructure would kill the whole project. So, I came up with, after doing some research, uh, I found out what I believe might be a better idea as far as what to do with this property. I did some research and, um, I believe this compromise would allow my family to develop this property to not quite as full of financial potential as the previous plan, but enough to make it work while reducing the total number of lots from eight to five. The new plan goes as follows, instead of constructing a four-hundred-foot cul-de-sac that will be turned over to the town of Dudley and become a public way, I propose constructing a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot cul-de-sac that would remain a private way. By reducing the length and width of the road and the total number of lots served by the road from six to three, many of the items normally required could be eliminated. For example, storm water management becomes much simpler due to the reduced area of impervious surface. Massachusetts Storm Water Management Handbook has this to say in regards to applicability. It states, quote, "The storm water management standards shall not apply to, one, a single-family house, and, two, housing development and redevelopment projects comprised of detached single-family dwellings on four or fewer lots, provided there are no stormwater discharges that may potentially affect a critical area." And the critical areas they're talking about are critical resource areas and there are none in the area. This is all upland.
Can I just say something? You have five lots and state requires four or more, you have to have a stormwater management.
Right, because if you look at the plan, you'll notice that the one lot in the front there is an A and R lot. I could come before the Board with an A and R plan for that lot and have that cut out today.
Proposing that in your design, yeah?
Say that again?
Are you proposing that law in your design? So it's four, four or more requires a stormwater management?
All right, but these, these two, these two lots could be A and R lots, so they could be built whether this, whether this road is put in or not.
That's what I'm saying.
Being designed into this road, though.
Yeah, they have?
Yeah, you're.
No, those lots won't have frontage on this. Those, those lots do not have frontage on the proposed road.
Well, they do have frontage, but they, you're not using that frontage.
Well, I, that's what I meant, I meant the, the legal frontage that makes those buildable lots is on Sawmill Road.
Right, they'll have an address to Sawmill Road, they will not have an address of whatever this road is named.
But then your road goes down onto Sawmill, so you'd have to have two catch bases at the end of the road, no matter what.
No, because there is?
Every intersection has four catch bases at the lowest point of the road.
There is no subsurface drainage in Sawmill Road, it doesn't exist.
Yeah, but it's still required on your road. Sawmill's already existing road, you're putting in a new road, new construction designs require catch bases at the end of the road.
Country drainage. No, country drainage.
Country drainage, stuff that a stormwater report, I would say. How do you know you're not a low-impact without a stormwater report? Stormwater report will give you a low-impact drainage.
You, you can have a stormwater report that shows that country drainage would suffice, that doesn't necessarily mean that you have to have subsurface drainage.
I mean, this proposed way could be, from what it's designed to right now at eighteen feet wide, that could be no more than a?
Well, that's the other question.
Could be no more than a common driveway. I mean, if somebody bought this piece of land up here?
Well, common driveway still has to have stormwater reporting drainage put in.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, it says it in the code book.
Not in any of the ones we've done so far.
Well, hold on.
Yeah, you know, common driveway for two lots is the normal situation, that's a byright use.
Right.
So we don't review those.
Right.
And if it's more than two lots, it's a ZBA special permit.
Right, or like if it's part of, I mean, like when we did Dave's Way, there was, I think there's a common driveway off the back of, I think it's three or four houses on Dave's Way, because they had frontage.
Mr. Chairman, it's, uh, the, uh, the housing on Mason Road, uh, the common driveway there, is that driveway servicing complete properties?
Mason Road.
Oh, the, the one up near, um, right before you get to June Street?
Not too far from the intersection with Sawmill.
I, I think that's only two there, Richard. I think it's the two, two new houses in the back are on the common driveway and I think that the existing house up in the front still has its own driveway.
Yeah, that, I think, I don't know.
It looked to be kind of connected, but that's okay, no problem, thank you.
I don't know how many houses are on the one that's off of Dave's Way, but, uh, Dave's Way, the houses have frontage on one ninety-seven, but it was deemed that it was not safe for them to enter and exit off of one ninety-seven, so they put a common driveway in the back of the houses. And I believe it's, it's at least three, if not four. The developer went and got his special permit from the ZBA and then he came to the planning board to have the, have the subdivision, um, have the subdivision plan changed to show that, because the building inspector and the highway superintendent, I believe the police, uh, police chief at the time deemed that those driveways were not safe for people to be entering and exiting the property. So the driveways were removed and the common driveway was installed in the back. And that common driveway doesn't even have a turnaround at the end, it, uh, cul-de-sac at the end, it simply has like an L shape to it, so that the, if there was a fire truck or an ambulance that pulled down, they could turn around and get back out, but they couldn't, they couldn't make a full circle, they'd have to do a three-point turn.
Getting back to, uh, Tom's original comment about the four lots requiring, um, requiring the, uh, stormwater, again, it's housing developments and redevelopment projects comprised of detached, single-family dwellings on four or fewer. So, you can have four lots. So even if the, even if one of those two lots in the front there wasn't an A and R, it would still qualify, because there's three lots in the back and one in the front, that's four.
So, I've sent this plan up to Jeff Walsh for?
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is.
We should have his comments at the next meeting. So tonight, this is really just for information, I don't expect you to take any action on it.
Right.
I just wanted to give you a chance to?
But it is, it is permissible for the planning board to relax the standards of building a road in, in the, in the town for?
Yes.
If it's for a few?
Yeah, well, up to a minimum standard is set by Mass DOT under new roadway construction.
This doesn't necessarily have to be a roadway, this can be a common driveway.
Common driveways have to be sixteen to eighteen feet wide.
It's eighteen feet wide?
Eighteen feet, yeah, but they still have to pull the drainage.
Well, I'm, you know, you have your subdivision regulations, which you can waive.
Cause on them?
I'm not familiar with any DOT standards, I could look into it, you know, as Tom is mentioning, to see whether they apply?
Yeah.
To, to town jurisdiction.
Common driveways of sixteen to eighteen feet must be cleared eighteen feet prior to five-two-seven CMR. Now it says drainage must be acquired under a CMR, uh, three-ten CMR, ten point zero five-six, in the code book, so you have to have drainage, cause I know Mason Road one So you have to have drainage, because I know Mason Road one has drainage designed, and that's standard.
I know the ones that we've approved in the past didn't have any drainage. I mean, we've approved all subdivisions with no drainage.
Yeah, but the new one did on Mason Road.
Mr. Meadows has no drainage.
Gentlemen, the other key is there's nothing there that says subsurface drainage. It doesn't say the drainage has to be subsurface. All it says is has to be drainage, which if you build, if you, if you build the road correctly, you can have the water shed off to the side, country drainage.
Yeah, but you have to have 30 feet flat land to 40 feet, I would have to ask Mr. Walsh that.
I don't know where you got that from.
Huh?
I don't know where you got that from. Britley's Way has a right-of-way of 50 feet wide, it has an 18-foot wide paved area.
A right-of-way has to be, can't be a minimum less than 40 feet. 50 to 40 feet is a minimum right-of-way required by Massachusetts DOT Transportation under new road construction standards.
But you get, you keep going back to road construction, this doesn't necessarily have to be a road.
Looks like a road to me.
It can be, it says proposed way, it can be a private driveway.
It's gonna be a private way. That's just it, I have no intention of turning this over to the town.
Yeah, but what happens when your neighbors want it, if these people want it?
You gotta put it, you put it in the deed when they sell the property.
It will be on, it will be on the plan, it will be written on the plan, that this will never become a public way.
Right, it's deed, the people who buy these properties would have it in their deed that it's, it's always, it's forever to be kept as a private way, and they need to maintain it in some kind of.
But you said it on Nicholas' call, you can't dump water onto another property. So technically, I believe you would have to have two catch bases at the bottom of the road.
There's no two catch bases at the end of my road.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but when was that done?
2000, 2001?
I know every intersection lowest point of the road has to have a drainage.
Well, catch bases have to.
Let's say the snow melts during the day, water runs down, it's gonna run into Mason Road, and it's gonna freeze overnight, onto Sawmill Road.
Right, but if there's no drainage in Sawmill now.
Well, that was designed years and years ago, so you can't hold that.
Right, but I mean, if this lot was sold off and a single home was built back here, and they put in a driveway as big as this, as big as this driveway that's proposed, it would be the same situation. You can't stop somebody from putting in an 18-foot wide driveway.
I don't know, we'd have to talk to Graves' Engineering, I think would be the best thing, to hold, to hold this, all these waivers and everything, because even your berm coming onto this road, that's standard.
For a road, but this is a driveway.
Yeah, but, I don't know, I don't know how a private way, you'll have to ask Graves' Engineering what he would think.
See what they say? I mean, this is just a, this is just an informal.
Yeah, I know.
Proposal.
So, moving on. In order to make this plan work, I would need the support of the board by way of granting several waivers. None of the waivers requested are unheard of or that far out of the ordinary. This is where I talk about Britley's Way. Britley's Way is the example that I found existing in town where this type of a subdivision seems to be working perfectly fine. Britley's Way is a small subdivision in Dudley off of Dresser Hill Road number two. It was approved by the planning board in 2005, just before the market tanked. In 2013, another builder hired by the bank submitted an A&R that was approved. Britley's Way is about 350 feet in length, it is a private way, has no sidewalks, no subsurface storm water management, and no burms. The paved width is approximately 18 feet in width. I also have a copy of the covenant for Britley's Way that shows the waivers that were granted at the time, in case anybody needs a copy of that.
Mr. Chairman, question to Mr. Wetruba.
Sure.
And Mr. Wetruba, you mentioned that the proposed plan that you have, that private way will never be anything but a private way. Is there any such verbiage in the agreement that was made with you guys to Britley's Way that it can never be considered or never come up with consideration as a public way?
Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I'm going from memory here, but I think there was something in the covenant that said something to that effect. Yeah, so I believe it actually, it goes in the covenant, and then that becomes part of the deed.
It can be an order of conditions, and then it's written into the deeds on the properties.
And then I think we usually require it actually written right on the plan, don't we?
Yeah.
So on the definitive plan.
And that is in perpetuity, I mean, that is forever, right?
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Yep, so it goes to the registry of deeds with the, with the deeds for the properties when they're sold off.
With one exception, Richard, and that exception would be if the three homeowners of the new lots in the back actually wanted to spend the money and bring the road up to the current standard required by the town, then they could get it converted to a public way. But as we well know, the expense involved.
I, I would mention, I have this aversion to these public way, I mean, these private ways, I've driven, if you've driven up Britley's Way, have you driven out? I believe there's two houses up there, as I recall, and that road is in need of some TLC. I don't know if the homeowners are gonna look to maybe share that opportunity with the town at some point, depending again on how, whatever documentation exists that is written.
Bill, it.
When I want a private way, I'm sorry, but my mind tells me what I see in Worcester.
This would not be the situation here. For one thing, I actually had multiple photographs of Britley's Way that I had taken, and I only saw one pothole on Britley's Way. I thought it was actually in pretty good shape, so I'm not quite sure.
Well, I, I think I doubled up on you, unless I was seeing double. Given my current condition, that's finally possible, but I believe I saw at least the one edge that looked like it was wearing pretty badly, and I don't know that anybody following there is gonna be too kind to that.
So our intention would be to have the, have our attorney draft something that would go with the deeds for the three lots in the back, that would show that the three homeowners of the three lots in the back would be equally responsible for the snow plowing and maintenance of the way.
Okay.
That's something that they didn't used to do back in the day, and that's why you had a lot of the problems that you would see, like, we talked, you know, like you just mentioned, like some of the, some of the roads in Worcester, that now, you know, you'd need an army tank to get past some of those safely. But that's what, by having an agreement like that drafted, that goes with the deed and stays with the deed, that ensures that you can't have a situation where a neighbor decides that he doesn't want to, he doesn't want to chip in for the costs, so.
You could, you could even have, you could even have that in the deed, that there's gonna be an established homeowners association for the, in particular for the, for the preservation and maintenance of that way, and at closing, when they, when they close on their property, some amount, you know, $1,000, $2,000 from each, from the sale of each home is going into that account, and it's gonna be there to start the account off, so the people don't move into a brand-new house, and then five years later, if the road, if the way needs to be sealed, coated, or maintenance done, there's some money there for it already.
Sure, there's more than one way to do it, but that's something we would obviously leave up to the attorneys, they're the professionals, they're the ones who write this kind of language, so they, you know. But we did, we did consider that, that we would have to have some sort of a.
Association.
So I was just saying that Britley's Way is approximately 18 feet wide. The absence of burms was a suggestion made by the town's engineer during the peer review process. This allows for the road surface to drain to the sides and the grassy areas abutting the pavement, AKA country drainage. So Bill, at this point, I think we had the, I had those pictures for the, from the Lawn Pack Development Handbook?
Is it on this?
Yeah, I think it's the slide, the next slide, maybe? Okay, no, my mistake. All right, so next we get into the waivers.
Doing this then up on the, on the disc?
No, it's okay, we can, we can just roll with this. Thanks. All right, so then we talk about the waivers. If the board unanimously agrees that this proposal, this proposed five-lot project, the three-lot subdivision plus the two A&Rs in the front, better suits the character of the area than the previously proposed eight-lot subdivision, then I would respectfully request the following waivers from design standards. So the first waiver is in Section 4, under A Streets, Location and Alignment. Street jogs with centerline offsets of less than 125 feet should be avoided. I want to stress "should," it's not "shall," it's "should." If it said "shall," then you have to absolutely do it. If it's "should," then you should try and avoid it. The photograph you see up there on the screen right now actually is, I superimposed the position of the proposed private way on the lot, so you can see it in reference in the aerial photograph to Lawrence Road, and you can see that there's a slight offset from Lawrence Road. So that's why we're requesting the waiver for offset. If I shift that over so that it lines up perfectly with Lawrence Road, then I don't need the offset waiver. The problem with that is, then I lose frontage on the lot to the right there, and that no longer becomes an A&R lot, which is what I'm trying to avoid. You can see it's not much of an offset, I don't think it's gonna create a traffic hazard. I think, you know, if it was a 50-foot offset.
It's different if you're proposing three lots versus eight lots.
Well, that's the other thing, too, obviously, the amount of traffic coming in and out.
Down the roadway versus three homes, which could be as little as three cars or six cars a day.
So then the, the, basically it said the proposed private way would be almost directly across from the outlet of Lawrence Road. Property lines at street intersections shall be rounded or cut back to provide for a curb radius of not less than 30 feet. I'm asking for a reduction from a 30-foot radius to a 10-foot radius. The original regulations required a 50-foot right-of-way, but they didn't have this requirement for the radius. The radius requirement came in later. When my father sold off the lot that that existing house is on, you can see, actually see there's a house right there, the name is Billis.
Yep.
My sister originally owned that house. My father gave that property to my sister as a wedding gift, and they built a house there. The reason why it's where it is is because he wanted to leave exactly 250 feet from the edge of that lot up to our lot line, because he knew at the time that you needed 100 feet frontage for each lot, and that you needed 50 feet for a right-of-way, so he left 250 feet. Then, they changed the regulations and they required this radius. So now the problem is, if I put a 50-foot right-of-way in there, and I try and get that radius in there, you lose the frontage on those two A&R lots. However, since we're only servicing three lots in the back, and if we reduce that to a 30-foot right-of-way and an 18-foot wide paved area, you can actually see the line of the radius for the driveway, or not driveway, the, the public, the private way, and you can actually see that it's a pretty good radius right there, it's not gonna be a problem, it's.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wetruba, you gave us a very good explanation of the difference between "should" and "shall," but as I'm reading this in front of me, it says "shall be." It's still consistent with your definition.
What was that, "shall"? Where, where are you reading that?
Property lines at street intersections shall be rounded or cut back to provide curb radius of not less than 30 feet. Request reduction from 30 feet to, what you're asking for is a reduction, but you gave us an explanation of the definition.
Oh, I see, you're, I, I, yeah, the "should."
And I think that.
The "should" was for the offset.
"Shall" here again.
I guess the point I'm making is with the "should," that it might not even be a waiver issue, but I included it, where, where.
But you also defined "shall" as something, as I recall, your definition, "shall" as something that had to happen, had to be done.
But it can be waived.
Well, okay, yes, yes, I suppose anything and everything can be waived.
Well, not really.
What's that, Tom?
Not really, you still have design standards set by civil engineers and everything, that everyone's designed the same way.
Yeah, I, you know, to that point, when we start waiving things, the rules and regulations start to, you're voted down, I mean, you're setting precedent, that eventually they become meaningless, because everything is a waiver.
Yeah, and then the next person's gonna want the same thing. You know, I'd love to do a road with no drainage, no curbs, no everything. Maybe I'll come back and do one.
Well, again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting there be no drainage, I'm just suggesting the type of drainage be different. I, I gotta tell you guys, I mean, at this point, here's the state of things. I recuse myself from the proceedings, which leaves us with four board members.
Well, you can break Dan in, right?
Dan can't vote on this, because this is not a special permit.
This is a permit.
If Dan was here this evening, he could comment on this, but as far as actually voting, what it comes down to is it comes down to you four gentlemen. If it becomes a two-to-two tie, I lose, it fails.
Well, I'd like to hear from Graves' Engineering.
And I'll tell you.
I'm not really a design person to cut curbs and give you waivers on something that might be actually required.
What I'm hearing right now is I'm hearing a pretty strong no from three out of the four board members.
No, I give you.
At this point, if I'm just wasting my time, we could stop this now, I'll withdraw my preliminary right now.
I'm not, I don't know your curb angles, I don't know what the state requires, I don't know what the civil engineers, I have no idea, right? I don't think any one of us do.
I think we need to let this process play out.
Yeah, we need to take this.
I would ask Mr. Wetruba if he would maybe continue with your presentation, if you can get it at the discussion, like, this waiver in this meeting or at the next meeting.
So then we get into the width waiver. The minimum width of street right-of-ways shall be 50 feet, the minimum width of pavement shall be 26 feet. Although there's frontage available for a 50-foot right-of-way, the need for a radius where it intersects Sawmill Road would take frontage away from lots one and two. By requesting a reduction in right-of-way to 30 feet and paved width to 18 feet, the new way will be able to have a satisfactory radius where intersecting Sawmill Road. So that was what I just explained. Number four, dead-end streets. Dead-end streets shall not exceed 600 feet in length, shall be provided with a turnaround having an outside roadway diameter of at least 100 feet and a property line diameter of at least 120 feet. I've got the 120-foot diameter for the property line, what I'm asking for is a reduction from 100 feet paved road diameter to 80 feet. So that's basically the actual paved area, the cul-de-sac, again, trying to reduce the amount of impervious surface to help with drainage. There's no need to build a very large cul-de-sac at the end if you've only got three house lots there. And the big question that always comes up whenever we talk about reductions of cul-de-sacs is what does the fire department think of this? We've got a letter from the chief, basically saying they, they don't have a problem with it.
Assistant chief. Just the assistant.
I can get you a letter from the chief, that would suffice.
What's your cul-de-sac? 80?
80.
Yeah, so 50 is required, but fire code says 60 is required for that. That's NAPA law, 1141, 5.2.2 requires 60 feet from fire department standards, so you're good there.
Oh, there's one. The minimum acceptable, okay, so next is open space. This is, I thought this would be pretty self-explanatory. Open space, the minimum area acceptable for public acquisition shall be one acre, and any open space shall provide at least 50 feet of continuous frontage on a street. So, as you can see, I've got the 120-foot cul-de-sac, that is exactly what I need to get the frontage, the 300 feet of frontage required for the three lots. So if I take 50 feet out of that anywhere, I lose an entire lot. So I'm asking for a waiver on open space. The last thing, I'll add a couple things on, let's see, item F, utilities. All utilities shall be placed underground at the time of initial construction. I would request a waiver to allow National Grid to set one pole on the new way with the underground services from that pole going to the individual house lots. So I'm asking if instead of having the underground service start at Sawmill Road and go up to the end of the cul-de-sac, I can have National Grid come and set one pole at the end of the cul-de-sac, and then have underground service from that pole to the individual houses.
Just doing National Grid, that's on them, I don't think we can give a waiver for that, because they have their own set standards and calculations and everything done.
Yeah, well, I already, I already spoke with somebody at National Grid, and they said that they do that, so I'm not.
Yeah, your civil engineer has to put where you want that pole, and then they spike it. Your civil engineer spikes it, and then they put in their pole.
Yeah, so that would be on the definitive plan.
Yeah, so why would I need a waiver for something National Grid would have to do anyways?
Is the utilities on the opposite side of the road that you're proposing from the subdivision?
No.
The utilities are on that side.
Yeah, there's actually a pole right there.
Yeah, so why don't you just go up that pole and hook it up?
Just come down that pole and put it into the, into the way. If there's an existing pole, you can run the lines right down the pole and run them underground.
Put a three-inch metal pipe up.
Okay.
Typically, they only put a pole in the subdivision if it's on the other side of the road. I mean, if you look at Tobin Farms, the, the lines are running down the other side of west of Dudley Oxford Road, so there's two telephone poles put at the entrances of Tobin Farms to get the power lines across the road and down into the ground, and then they ran it all the way around Tobin Farms.
Yeah, if you have a pole in front of your law, you can just hook it to that pole.
Okay.
Then it's 10-foot underground, 15-foot overhead.
I mean, in my, in my subdivision, there was a, there was a pole on either side of the road, roadway, and there were, the lines were on that side of the, of the, of the street, so all they did is run, what he said, a three-inch metal pipe down the side of one of the poles and put all the, put it out to all the handholds in the subdivision.
All right, so they just have one of those metal box things that you see in, what they call them.
You'll have to have a hand, you'll have a handhole or a transformer or something, I don't know if the.
Transformer goes at the end of the road.
At, at the, at the end of the cul-de-sac, or at the end of the?
At the end of your cul-de-sac, you'll have a transformer.
Okay.
And that's off back the other way.
Gotcha.
You actually have primary, secondary pipe in the ground.
Okay, all right, well then. Okay, all right. Well, then, uh, then I don't need that one.
Yeah.
All right, uh, item G, stormwater drainage plan. Given the topography of the site and the relatively small size of the proposed private way, we'd like to incorporate the use of country drainage like that used on Britley's Way. Uh, there is no subsurface drainage system on Sommel Road. And as previously mentioned, the state stormwater management standards do not apply to subdivisions of four or fewer homes. So, uh, number, item J, fire protection. This is kinda funny. I, you know, when I was going through the regulations, I came across this and it seems to me like, I swear the last subdivision we did, that this, this wasn't even a waiver we granted and I don't even think it came up. But, uh, so as an aside, this might be something we want to change in the regulations going forward. So, item J says, proposed subdivision, um, actually, I didn't have the, I didn't write the verbiage, but basically, this is the item that says that you have to put cisterns in subdivisions for storage of water. And I've had discussions with the chief and the assistant chief and neither one of them think these are good ideas. I guess prevailing wisdom is this is not a good idea to do these things. They gave me all the reasons that I could go over it, you know, I could get you more information, but their feeling is that this is a regulation that came about because a previous chief in town thought it would be a good idea. So he pushed to have it added to the subdivision regulations, but apparently other towns don't have it. And he, the current chief doesn't believe that it's something we need. It has something to do with the fact that they can't guarantee that these things are gonna be maintained and that they're not gonna know whether or not there's water in them when they pull up to use them. That they're better off just assuming that they've gotta bring their own water in a tanker truck or run to the nearest hydrant. There is a, um, uh, we're over 500 feet from municipal water line. So we're requesting a waiver for the underground systems for fire protection and there's a fire hydrant 1,200 feet away. And again, the letter from the fire department, he doesn't even address it because it's not, he doesn't consider it an issue. He's not requiring cisterns. If he was, he would be saying it right, he would be saying it in the email we received.
Yeah, I don't know. That's a 10,000 gallon tank. They're required or not, who knows?
So, um, so section five, uh, this all gets into how the cottage drainage works with the, uh, lack of berms and the lack of sidewalks. So section five is street and roadway berms. We request a waiver from the requirement of berms as these would only serve to keep the water on the roadway. You can't have cottage drainage, I mean, sorry, cottage, you can't have country drainage if you've got berms because then the water doesn't go off the road. It runs down the road to some point, which at that point, you'd have to have culver, um,
Catch basin.
Catch basins. Sorry, I couldn't think of the term. Catch basin. And if you've got catch basins, you have to have piping and so basically, you add berms, you basically are forcing the need for subsurface drainage systems. So, section five C is sidewalks. We request a waiver for the requirements for sidewalks. There are no sidewalks within over half a mile of this site. There are only three lots at the end of the road and the road is approximately 200 feet long. So, this actually is a lot shorter than, um, Britley's Way. So if you think about kids walking to the bus stop, for instance, they're literally walking from the end of their driveway, they're walking about 150 feet to the bus stop. You know, and we all know a football field is 100 yards from end zone to end zone. That's 300 feet. So, I don't think it's too much to ask a kid to walk without a sidewalk from the end of his driveway. To the 50-yard line.
Behind a school bus up late because they stop every 20 feet, is what I've noticed.
Right, right. But, uh, as we discussed, this is a private way. I would, I can't imagine a school bus would be coming down this, uh.
No, school buses can't go down.
No, well, they can't. It's gonna be a private route. They can't go down that route.
Right.
You're gonna pick them up on Sawville.
What do you mean? They go down Fairway Ave every day.
Yeah, we're also making, we're also making assumption that everybody who lives in all three of those houses is gonna have kids.
Yeah, but sidewalks are a public safety issue. I don't even think you can waive that. You can waive one side, not the other side.
Well, I, Mr. Wetrova and I have, uh, history with regards to our passionate pleas with, we got both pro and con for sidewalks. So I'll suffice to say that at this point.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Sidewalks, I'm not a fan of either, but.
Okay, so I, I basically said it's only about 200 feet long. Oh, item E is monuments. This was something that I didn't even realize was a waiver that you can get, which is, um, I saw it on the covenant for Britley's Way. It's the, uh, since the road's gonna remain a private way, I would request that iron pins are used to set the lot lines in lieu of monuments because of the, the monuments actually, I thought they were just these small stone things, but they're actually these big granite pillar things that they put in. And I think it's overkill for a, uh, a three-lot subdivision. But that seems like small potatoes compared to the mountain of opposition I'm hearing from, from the board this evening. And then, of course, everybody's favorite trees. The lot is completely wooded right now. There's actually some nice, mature trees on the property. So my recommendation there was instead of planting small new trees every, what is the, what is the regulation called for? Like every 70 feet?
50, I think.
Every 50 feet? And is it on both sides of the road? Okay, so what are we talking about? Four trees I'm planting? You want me to plant four new little trees there or would you rather I kept four, four or more substantial trees? And we'd be willing to stipulate, you know, we'd put it on the definitive plan that where, where exactly which trees you're gonna get. But I mean, to me, it makes more sense if they're gonna be mature trees. And we've gone over this time and time again. Trees are just a bad idea if it's gonna be a public way, uh, somewhere in town. We've talked about how trees, they grow and they tend to, the root system tends to get into the roadway and causes just, it just causes damage. So, this is a, uh, this is another regulation we might wanna revisit at some point down the road. Maybe at least add some verbiage saying, hey, give the alternative, instead of planting new trees, could you just keep some of the existing trees on the property? Which is what I'm proposing with this property. We try and keep some of the, the substantial trees. So that's, uh, so it's G for trees. Number four in that section is under electric and telephone wiring and street lighting. So I, I'm gonna skip the first part of this because I talked, this was again talking about the, the setting the pole. But obviously, I don't need to set a pole there if we're gonna do.
If there's an existing pole.
Right, if, 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 well, at the end of the cul-de-sac, I don't need to set a pole there if it's gonna be underground.
Right.
And rather than have a streetlight at the end of the cul-de-sac, each driveway's gonna have their own light. So that should suffice, right? Okay. And there is an existing streetlight at Sommel Road, the intersection of, it's there because of the intersection of Lawrence Road already being there, so there's an existing streetlight there. So I think that covers that.
You have a streetlight, you're saying? Pretty much on Lawrence Road across the street?
Yeah, yeah.
So you don't need one.
Well, I didn't know whether or not, the way I read it, I read it to mean that I had to put a streetlight at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Typically, they like.
Yeah, at the intersection, but if you have one there, you don't need to ask for a waiver.
No, no, at the, at the end of the cul-de-sac, I meant at the, uh, the end where the houses are.
Oh, yeah, I wanna, no, cause every house has to have a light post.
Right.
By our electrical code standards and, so, that's why they got rid of those lights.
So if you don't think it's a waiver to require, then I, I won't ask for it. I just don't, I don't want at a later date, somebody to say, hey, you're gonna put a, a streetlight up there and be like, well, wait a minute, I gotta.
No, they got rid of that because they wanted you to put a light post in every house.
Right. And then the other factor is if the lots in the front are 150 feet deep, it would be hard not to cause light pollution from that streetlight in the backyards of those houses.
Well, a streetlight, the town has to get a meter. They have to hook up their own meter to have a streetlight. That's another thing.
We, we have, I mean, there's no streetlights in Pierpon Estates. Every house has a, has a pole light at the end of their driveway.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, that, that's, that's it. That's all I got. I mean, I, I certainly appreciate where you guys are coming from with a lot of the comments.
Uh, one question, this, this is chairman, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Wetrova, there's a stone wall there, isn't there?
This, uh.
On Lawrence Drive.
Yeah, I see it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there is a stone wall. That's not a scenic road though.
What, what does P have in store for that stone wall? Will any part of that remain or is that gonna be, uh, gone?
Oh, no, the stone wall, well, the part of the stone, we'll have to remove part of the stone wall for the, for the, uh, private way to go in.
I understand, but your two, your two A and R lots would have that as part of the frontage, hopefully. I mean, like.
Yeah, that'll be nice, uh.
For sidewalks, I kinda like stone walls, if you will. They speak of the legal, if you're old in the town, culture, uh, history.
And there's actually a opening in the stone wall already where there's a, uh, must've been an old cart path or something, uh, from way back when. So maybe the driveway for that house could line up with that. In other words, the stone wall is not contiguous. There's a, uh, there's a break in it already.
Right, but if you're gonna take part of it out, you could, you could maybe fix the rest of it.
Right, right, but absolutely. The stone, that stone wall continues on. It goes in front of the house, uh, the Billis house, it goes in front of their house and it goes down and then it ends and, well, it actually makes a turn and goes into the property. It's actually shown on the, uh, it's shown on the plan there. You can actually see where it comes down. Before it gets to the existing two-story dwelling, it turns and goes into the property that way. And then it also acts as the property boundary for the easternmost lot line.
Okay, so, um, Phil, the next step is for Mr. Wetrova basically is, uh, this would go to get some comments from Jeff Walsh and see what he has to say. And then we would take it back up at a later date.
Yes. So we'll take it up again.
And it would still be considered preliminary.
Second Wednesday of January would be our next meeting.
Okay. Has he already got this?
He does.
Okay. All right.
Is that proposed lot two gonna be an A and R plan too?
Which?
One of the ones in the beginning here, right? It's only got 99.87.
All right, say that again.
The lot two, it's only got, uh, 99.87.
Yeah, the reason why that's 99.87 is because that's the straight line distance of the front lot line. But the radius right there is, um, it's a 10-foot radius and you take half of that 10-foot radius, that gives you five extra feet and that puts you over the 100 feet. So that becomes a, uh, that becomes an A and R once this is accepted. If this is accepted.
I don't want the building inspector to shut you down because of the.
No, I, no, I appreciate it, but that's, Phil, I, I got that correct, right?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. All right, well, thank you for your time this evening. As if I'm going anywhere.
Okay, that wraps up our new business. We're gonna go on to the standard business. So the first thing on, uh, standard business discussion, status report on finishing construction of, acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets including Pierpon Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Eisenhower Drive, Tobin Farm Estates and Lyon Estates. Do we have any?
Couple of things. Um, on Pierpon, I sent you a VDA decision granting two variances for area.
Yep.
For the lots in that subdivision that were, uh, changed because of the town meeting action to increase the lot sizes. So, uh, I think he had gotten variances for eight lots previously. And I think these two had not been built on yet, so the variance was going to expire. So he's gotten the variances again so that he can continue to build on those lots. Country View Estates, I had a conversation today with the water sewer superintendent who was curious as to what the status is of, uh, that street being brought forward to acceptance by, uh, for town meetings. Mind if you had any more conversations?
I've had two phone calls with, 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 with Mr. Heaney and sent him two emails and I still have not received a response back. I wrote everything, everything down that we discussed in the phone calls and put it in an email and said to him, basically, could you just read it over and if you agree, send me something back in writing that you agree to this? And I was gonna forward it to everybody after, after there was agreement. But he hasn't confirmed the agreement, so.
Kind of the same pattern, you know?
Yeah, yeah. And when I talked to him the last time, he did tell me that he was, uh, that it was right after the hurricane that was down in Florida, so he has property in Florida and he was down there working on his property. So he, I don't know if he's, if he's even back up here at this time or if he's still in Florida working on his property, but, um, yeah, so that's where it is right now. It's, we don't have a, I would like to have some, a commitment or an agreement in writing before we, you know, go forward. I mean, he was verbally agreeable to what we had discussed. And I, I, I had this conversation with, uh, the town administrator to follow up and see if, if, if he thought it was, you know, fair.
Yeah, I guess the concern is the sewage pump station is still privately owned. It should be owned by the town.
Right.
And they won't accept it until the street is accepted, so.
The other situation was he wasn't, he was planning on going to Florida and not plowing the road this winter. And I said, well, I think you need to have somebody plow the road this winter because if you're not gonna be here, I mean, it's not accepted by the town, the town's not gonna plow it. I mean, or if they do, they'll just send you the bill.
Yeah, and now you have 30 days to pay that bill or you have, they have to show up to court.
So, yeah.
That was, uh, court rule was this year.
Verbally, when I was speaking to him the last time, he didn't agree that he was gonna get a contractor. He was gonna see about getting a contractor, getting somebody contracted to take care of that. I mean, I don't know if it got plowed. We had a three-inch snowstorm. I don't know if it got plowed or sanded during the three-inch snowstorm we just had.
So on Tobin Farm, uh, the highway superintendent is putting together a bid package so that we can put that work out to bid.
Well, do you know if that will go out this year or will it be in next year?
While town meeting approved funding.
Yep.
So the bid package would go out over the winter, I think. And then hire a contractor to do the work during construction season. He was wondering whether he would like to review that, the bid spec before he puts it out. So he'd be willing to come and talk to you about what, uh, what we've already agreed to as part of the, uh, the scope of work that Graves Engineering put together.
Right, I mean, I think as long as he's, I, I would feel better if it was reviewed by Graves than if it was, if it was reviewed by us because we're not professional engineers like Mr. Shinaki said. So I would just say let, let Graves have a look at it and if he agrees that that's what he, what he quoted, then.
So you're okay with the scope as it was previously submitted?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I mean, that's what, that's what I think the people expect to get. You know, that's what they voted for to, to pay, to pay for was to, to finish the subdivision per the, per the plan that was on file.
Okay.
So, I mean, we won't, we won't know if that's done until it's, you know, it's, it's bid, it's, it's, the work's done and the engineer comes back and signs off that it's complete, so.
On Eisenhower Road, if they took that to a Betterment law, what do you think they would be looking at to even finish in there?
I think the only thing that's, the only thing that's outstanding right now that I, that I know of is the street trees. And, you know, I, I basically explained to Mr., um, you know, Mr. Heaney that with the, the, I don't know what the, what Jeff Murray's feeling is on street trees, but the previous town, uh, highway superintendent didn't want the street trees to go in because his feeling was be that it would wreck the sidewalks. So I said, you know, we could waive the street trees, you know, for him and he, he would basically be done all his work there. I mean, that's all he, all he has to do. The meets and bounds are in.
So I was wondering if they, if they, these owners said, hey, let's do it a Betterment line and brought it forward, what kind of work is actually left there, you know? Would it just be signed over? For, hey, we'll put, put a ten trees and walk away.
There is a, uh, we need, we need all the paperwork and the ASBIL plan done. And he said that he had, his engineer, I guess, has already done all the work, but he hasn't put it on paper. So the, all the measurements have been out and they've taken everything. Yeah, so he needs, and he, his engineer, he was telling me, is involved with a very large project in Douglas with Lowell's, warehouse or center or something. So he didn't know if he could, that was what he was supposed to look into and get back to me. So he didn't know if he could get, that was what he was supposed to look into and get back to me, if his engineer was able to put that work that he's already done on paper and get it to us. Like I said to him, we need it by the end of January for the spring town meeting, and if that was even possible, so he was gonna...
We also need to finish the work on the pump station as well.
Right.
I thought they put in, put new pump and everything.
They do have a new pump, and I think he wants to put some kind of rails to bring the pump out of the, out of the pit.
For the pump to be raised, plus there's some electrical work that needs to be done in there too.
Right, so I, I mean, I, I explained that to, to Mr. Heaney also, and, um, you know, I know that the money that's left in the escrow account wouldn't take care of everything. So, I mean, even, and if we had to go out and get our own ASBelt plan done, it would be much more expensive than if he just did it, so... I think, uh, yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be much, 'cause there's, there's quite a few houses over there. There's probably twelve houses on that street. Ten or twelve houses, so, I mean, if you split it up ten or twelve ways, it wouldn't, it would probably be less than a thousand dollars per household, and they'd be done with it, but I, I don't know.
But they shouldn't have to. I mean, it shouldn't be developed and finishes it up.
We, we were conversing, it's just, I, you know, I don't know what the situation, the current situation is with them. I, I mean, I can try, I can try giving them another call. I, the last correspondence I sent him was in November, and I haven't heard back since, so I, I can try.
Okay. Time was, you know, short. We might wanna get it to town meeting if we can, so...
Right, and that's what I, that's what I expressed in my email to him, you know, like, we just need to know if you can, if you can commit to having everything done by the end of January. And I said to him, you know, if, if you can't, if you need to, middle of February or something, let us know what your, what your timeline's like. If it's, you know, if it's another two weeks or another month, maybe we can work with you, but, I mean, you know, we can't, we can't be taking it on like the, the first of May and expect it to be a town meeting, so... Okay, next, I'm on the agenda inspection and actions associated with site plans, so I saw we had some site plan, um, reports back.
Coming today, so I took them out.
Yeah, so we had one for the, we had one for the solar farm, and he did confirm it was a seven-foot fence. I saw that. Uh, this Legacy Landing Country Club Estates, that's listed here. We didn't have any more, we didn't have him go over, review that one again. He's already done that, right?
What's that now?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, a question for the planner.
Sure.
Uh, regards to Legacy Landing, and I know I've confused myself along the way, it's just a point of information. Uh, they're not, they haven't been actively doing anything out there for some time now. Uh, I know some people have come by, and, uh, last, I heard someone telling me they thought they were gonna be in by November, and it's November, but it's obviously not happened. Did, do you have any ideas, or have they passed along any information as to when they think they're gonna start occupying that area?
No, Richard, I haven't heard from him in quite a while.
Okay, thank you.
I can, I can follow up if you like. I'll follow up and see if I can get time for him.
And then the other one that we got a couple of reports on was J D and D, twenty-four Oxford Ave. Um, it looked like they put in all their drainage work on that site.
Yep. So, getting back to, uh, the solar project, we did get a request for an extension.
Correct.
Um, one-year extension, and, uh, we have a letter dated December seventh from Robert Bukowski, who's the project manager, asking for a one-year extension, uh, through December twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and he's estimating that construction will be complete by August of twenty-twenty-three. So that one-year extension should be sufficient to allow them to complete the project.
Okay, so would that just be a simple vote?
I'd like a vote, yes.
Okay, so...
And the fence is seven feet tall.
Yeah, there's a six-foot tape measure in this, in the picture, and it's not at the bottom of the post. Okay, so would somebody like to make a motion, um, on the request for a special permit extension for Oxford Avenue's Solar Foroboteic Development Corporation, I guess, or development company?
I'll make a motion to extend the one-year, right?
Yep, so we have a motion for a one-year extension on a special permit. We have a second roll call vote. Mr. Chinaki?
Aye.
Mr. Chinaki, aye. Mr. Durgan?
Aye.
Mr. Durgan, aye. Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Clark, aye. Uh, Mr. Wetrova?
Aye.
Aye for Mr. Wetrova, and aye for myself, Guy Horn, so that's unanimous. That takes care of that one for you, Bill. Let's see what else we have on the list here for this evening. Discussion of ideas for use of LPA time. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I skipped over planners' plate.
I don't have anything to report to you.
You don't have any, okay, so then we are, we are down to discussion of ideas for...
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, sorry, just wanted to mention, before we move on, I just had a question. As far as deficiencies that came up in the lice, in, in the last, uh, few site plan reviews, um, how long before the next time that the engineer goes out there and looks at those again to see if they've been resolved? 'Cause I, I know that he brought up some issues about, what was it? I'm trying to think of all the things. Gravel in the roadway, erosion.
Country View, uh, Country Estates there, the...
Uh, Lion, Lions Estates. Something about, uh, the Country Club.
Country Club Estates, yeah.
Yeah, Country Club Estates. It was mostly stuff like cleaning it up, that it was a lot of gravel or dirt on the road.
I, I went, I, I, I went up to, um, the one on Lions Road after, after we got that report, and I agree, it looks like they cleaned up that quite a bit.
Because I stopped over there and they were cleaning it up.
But I, I, I looked at the one that's over, over by, um, Dudley Hill Road, the, the Country Club Estates. It, it doesn't look, it doesn't look like it's cleaned up to me, so...
I did, you know, we got two of those site visit reports for the solar project, and I noticed a continuing pattern of erosion and sedimentation, uh, up at that site, so...
Oh, yeah, that's right, on that one too, yeah.
Very concerned about that. I sent an email to Mr. Bukowski, asking him to take action, and...
And aren't they doing some kind of detention basin work right now?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're taking care of it.
I hope so, I, you know...
And, and the, the reports that we got back from Graves the last time, so they went to, um, they went to Mr. Ravine for, for that subdivision. Did they also go to Mr. Haynes for the subdivision, Country Club Estates?
No, they haven't been down there in a long time. For the, for Mr. Heaney's? Eisenhauer?
No, no, Mr. Haynes.
Mr. Haynes, oh, okay, I'm sorry, right.
Yeah, so Mr. Hayne-
I, I think we had a report at the previous meeting.
Yeah, so it was either, they were there, I think, late October or early November.
Right.
Um, what, what's your idea, Mr. Wetrova? Have, ask, ask the town?
Well, I just, I just don't know how...
Go back and take a look?
Is it automatic, or do we have to ask him to go back and check if it's taken care of?
No, it's not automatic.
Okay.
We usually would ask them to take, make a visit, except when there's some major work going on. For example, at J D and D, they had contacted Graves to say they were putting in the subsurface drainage.
Right.
At that point, that triggers an inspection by the engineer, but otherwise, unless there's some key milestone like that, um, they only go out when we ask them to.
I mean, the thing that concerned me over at the Country Club Estates, a lot of the silt fence had fallen down, and, I mean, another couple of, I mean, it's probably already too late to start putting silt fence up with, with the crown being frozen.
Oh, yeah, that's, even if we sent the engineer now, now, now everything's covered with snow. I don't know how much you'd see, so maybe it's a moot point, I don't know.
So I think they should do some stabilization over the winter to prevent, you know, more erosion from happening, and then they can, in the spring, do some vegetation planting, some seed or whatever to stabilize it further.
I mean, if we have a hard winter, it's gonna be, it's gonna be hard for them to do much work, so we'll have to see what happens.
It's gonna be hard for them to plow the road with that dirt all over it.
All right, um... So that puts us back to discussion of ideas for use on the LPA time. You had, you had requested one hour for something. I forgot what it was.
The zoning map amendment?
The zoning map amendment. So how many hours do we have left?
Uh, well, we started out with twelve, and then we get an additional hour for every meeting that somebody attends. And Richard has been attending most of those meetings, so last year we got the maximum of twenty-four.
Okay.
So it'll be somewhere between sixteen and twenty-four probably. Richard, how many meetings have you been to so far?
Very good question. I have the foggiest idea. I don't think I've been to one.
Okay, so you've been half a dozen already then?
I would say so.
Okay, so we'll probably get the maximum.
Okay, so...
You know, one thought I had would be some kind of zoning amendment for bed and breakfast and Airbnb, some sort of true rental regulations. But I'm happy to hear whatever other ideas the board might have.
What's the current regulation right now for in-law apartments in town?
They're, they're allowed?
They're allowed, right.
Okay. But isn't there a rule that says it has to be, it can't be a detached, I'm wondering, like, if you had a detached garage and you had, you know, the space over it, and you could do everything else you need to do to make it formal?
Build a breezeway, and you're, you're all set.
Oh, yeah, but, um, some of these properties, the garage is pretty far away, or...
We could look at that internally, and if we decided we wanted to make some changes, we could do that fairly easily.
I'm just thinking, it seems like more and more kids are growing up and not moving out.
Well, wasn't there, wasn't there just something from the state that said that that was gonna be a, a use by right now, that you could have?
No multifamily houses on residential.
No, there was, there was something that came up from the state.
I have to check that.
That was something on accessory uses, and they, they were a lot, they were gonna be allowed by right from the state's viewpoint, not necessarily the town's viewpoint, but...
I'll look into that and see whether they actually pass something like that.
I think within the last two years that, that came up.
Because we, we have something in the subdivision regs that's, or in the zoning regs that say we can't have two, you can't have two single families on one property.
You can't have two dwellings on one property, but you can have a two, you could have a two-family on one property.
But you can't have two, two dwellings on one property, but then I think there's something in there that says unless they get permission from the board.
I'm not sure. The other thing I was thinking about we should probably look into too is, um, you, you mentioned, uh, Airbnbs, and, um, I mean, I don't know what the, what the town's outlook would be for, but a lot of other towns are already putting, uh, in proposals for tiny houses, and what kind of rules and regulations would you have for a tiny house? And I think right now our current rules and regulations state that, that a dwelling has to be a minimum of, I believe it's six hundred square feet, and it seems like an awful lot of space for...
That's actually building code.
For one person.
Space has to be six hundred feet, no less, I think.
That's Massachusetts building code?
Uh, yeah, that's state, yeah.
But it's not national, it's not...
Yeah, residential, yeah.
But it's not national code.
Residential code book, I believe, says a minimum.
Well, then how are they do, how are they doing what, what guy's talking about, 'cause you see that all the time now.
Well, they're putting them on, they're putting them on trailers and they're on wheels, so they're not considered a house.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Considered a vehicle.
So what about a mobile home now? A mobile home, you know, is on, is on wheels when they bring it in, but then they, they kinda build like a...
They jack it up and take the wheels off.
So at what point does that become a, a match?
I can read the accessory apartment provision, says addition of an accessory-use apartment to an existing single-family home is allowed, provided the evidence of multiple occupancy is not visible or apparent from the streetfront, and that the gross habitable space, as gross habitable space is defined in the building code, of the accessory-use apartment is at least four hundred square feet, but not more than nine hundred square feet.
Okay.
And the principal single-family home and the accessory-use apartment shall be held in the same ownership, and the owner of the single-family home must occupy one of the living areas.
Okay. So, can't have a detached garage with an apartment over it, but as long as it's attached to the single-family dwelling.
But you see it all over the place, a garage with a room on top.
Well, those would be illegal, you know what I mean?
So they're only committed to an existing single-family home. You couldn't build a home with an apartment in it?
Oh, I don't know about that. That seems kinda silly.
Yeah, 'cause there's a lot of, there's a lot of new houses being built within our apartments as, as standard equipment, 'cause people want it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pretty much anybody that buys a house...
I know of one that just got built.
Anybody that buys a house, first thing they do is do an apartment downstairs.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, like, I think there's a lot of things we could have, ask them for help with, I mean, if you think that's, that's an important thing, 'cause that's, that would have to change zoning, right, the, the Airbnb?
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of people are doing Airbnbs, but the bylaws silence.
We don't have, we don't have any rules or regulations to, to govern that.
So the question is whether they're permitted or not, and if people are doing it, then is it illegal or not? Be better to have something in place that the building commissioner can, can have to judge it.
It's something up and coming. It's, you know, kinda like the, the car charger thing. It's new, and some people don't understand it, but, I mean, we'll, we'll just have to explain it.
Well, that would be another, you know, option to have them look at, do some more in-depth research on the current science for those and how they're being regulated.
I mean, if we, if we don't use the time, we can't, we can't put it in the bank, right? It gets, it gets, we lose it?
Yes.
Yeah, so let's have them work on something.
Well, yeah.
Has everybody agreeable with the Airbnb stuff, 'cause we don't have any bylaws or rules governing that?
Yeah, there's no rules. We can do it then?
I don't think the state even has an Airbnb rules and regulations.
Yeah, it's not something I've ever researched, so I'm not familiar with, with the...
I know in New Hampshire, you see no air. Everybody has their sides up.
I believe, I believe.
Stop Airbnb's.
Even the town of South Portland, they outlawed it.
Yeah?
Yeah, they didn't want people having Airbnbs.
Yeah, 'cause their hotels and everything are losing a lot of business.
So, I mean...
They have hotels.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I'll forward that up to them.
Okay.
See if we can get some work done on that.
If they could put something together that would, that we could bring to town meeting, that would be great. Okay, comments from the planning board?
I was just curious, has anybody heard anything about what the, uh, the people who ended up bidding on that, the old meltdown on Schofield Ave in acquiring it? Has anybody heard anything about what they might be thinking about doing with that?
I remember the guy was gonna, was going up for auction like a month, a couple of months ago.
Yeah, I was talking to the building commissioner today. He said he got a, an email from somebody who had acquired the property, asking what he could do with it, so...
Yeah, he went, he went and boarded up all the windows and everything.
No kidding?
I seen them boarding up the windows down there.
Okay.
So I think he was asking more building code questions, you know, um, so it appears that he's interested in preserving the building.
It sounds like he bought it without having a specific use in mind.
It does sound like that, yes.
Oh, interesting.
Maybe it was its deal.
So I'm gonna try to, uh, contact this individual and see.
Let, let him know that he's, the property's in Mill Overly District, and he has, pretty much, he can do anything. He can do a lot, a lot in the Mill Overly District that's not allowed in other districts.
Right. We just allow self-stor- service storage facilities.
Right, mixed, he could do mixed use. He could do, he could do pretty much anything he wants there.
Oh, could you imagine if he did self-storage there, right across the street from the existing one? Oops.
Well, if the existing one goes out of business, they can't come back, so...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, a question for the planner.
Yep.
Yeah, uh, Bill, uh, are you gonna bring up that issue with regards to CMR PC?
Yes, yes, I can do that now, Richard, if you want. Um, so we got a letter from CMR PC, uh, just asking, uh, who our delegate will be for next year. So Richard has been our delegate there for quite some time, I think, two years.
Yep.
So I thought I'd bring it up to the board to see if Richard was interested in continuing, or if anybody else would like to take that on, and that would be fine too. It's up to the board to decide. Somebody should, you know, be willing to do it, first of all.
Right.
And then be appointed by the board.
Back in the days when I first started on the planning board, they gave that privilege to the newest member of the planning board, 'cause I, I got it my first year being elected to the planning board.
I wonder who that might be?
Dave's got time.
Richard, how do you, how do you feel about continuing, first of all?
Uh, I, we have no problems with continuing, but if, uh, the board started, that they wanted to bring on junior members, certainly would be all right, so I'd like to try.
Well, if you wanna do it, you can do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I think it's up to you, I mean, if you two guys wanna work together, like, if, if you wanna alternate going to opposite meetings, just so you can get your...
You need to have one, one delegate.
Oh, you have to have one delegate assigned?
Select and get a second delegate.
Richard, did you make some friends there?
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Did you make some friends there?
Oh, yeah. Well, everybody is very friendly, Mr. Wetrova, very friendly.
Oh, man.
Very nice.
Maybe you already know the gang, so...
Very nice people, very nice people.
And occasionally you get pizza when you go to meetings.
I was gonna say, you get free food?
Sometimes, not always. Sometimes you get pizza.
No, no, not always.
So, anybody else wanna take it on, or?
I, I just don't have the time.
Yeah, I don't have time. I have two kids.
Richard's happy doing it, then I got no problem, but if he doesn't want it, I'll do it.
Richard's a naturally happy guy.
Mr. Clark, I think, I think it's yours for the taking if you want. If not, we can ask, we can ask Mr. Durgan if he would like to step in for this year. It's up to you.
If Mr. Durgan wants to do it, he can have it, but otherwise I will stay in that new place.
Okay, Mr. Clark, Mr. Clark, I think it's yours for the taking.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll, we'll send a, do we need to, to make a vote on that?
Yes, I can fill out this form and get that to the board.
Do we need to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, would somebody like to make a motion that we nominate Mr. Richard Clark as our delegate to Central Mass Regional Planning for the two thousand twenty-three year?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote?
Yeah, Mr. Chinaki?
Aye.
Mr. Durgan?
Aye.
Mr. Wetrova?
Aye.
Guy Horn, aye. Mr. Clark, you voting for yourself?
I abstain, I will abstain.
Okay, so, it's a four, four with one abstention vote.
Before we get on to the next item, I was wondering if you all had a chance to review the decision for the Nichols College Town Home Project?
I read it over briefly, um, we still don't, did we receive anything from them saying that the property sale was, was over and done?
So, we had, as you know, four conditions, and three of them have been satisfied. Uh, they've added the guardrail, uh, they've added the trees.
Abrasities.
Right, uh, they submitted table one-dash-one revised, and they haven't closed down the property yet.
Okay.
Mr. Ravine said they intend to do that by the end of the month, and that he would then send us, uh, the deed when that's, that's accomplished.
I would, I would like to still wait on it, till we get, till we see, see that they actually own the property before.
You would, okay.
Except by the end of the week, of course, and I'll, I'll start with that, so.
So, I don't know what delay that he didn't say, but they haven't closed down it yet.
Yeah, so I, I would like to see, I would like to see it closed and make sure that it's, it's a done deal before we give our final approval.
Okay.
So.
Do you have any other comments on the draft that I sent you?
I did not.
So, then, I'll just wait for that, and then we can-
Yeah.
-take a vote at the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
And that was, that's a good question to bring up, um, are we, we're good, I think we brought, Mr. Clark brought it up at our last meeting, did we wanna, did we wanna cancel the last meeting of the year for December? And, um, we didn't know if we were gonna have anything for the agenda, I mean, other than this, is there anything else to put on the agenda? So, um, what's the board's pleasure? Would, we'd like to cancel the last meeting for the end of the year, it's typical that we do do that?
Quite as well.
Yeah, I thought we had already done it, I don't know why.
No, we, we were gonna wait to see if there was anything more pressing on the agenda, but this is, I, I don't think this is gonna really hurt if we wait.
I was, I was thinking I was coming back on the eleventh anyways, January.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, do we need to take a vote to cancel the last meeting, or?
Yeah, I, I thought we had done so already, but if you like-
I don't believe we did.
Okay, fine, then.
All right, so let's, uh, somebody wanna make a motion to cancel the last meeting in December two thousand twenty-two for the Town of Dudley Planning Board?
I'll make a motion to cancel the last meeting, December twenty-third.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, Mr. Shinaki? Aye. Mr. Durgan?
Aye.
Mr. Wetrova?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, we're gonna cancel the last meeting for two thousand twenty-three. So, our next regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board will be January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Takes care of that. I don't think we're gonna get any comments from the audience. Uh, do we have any vouchers or payments of bills?
Yes, we do, uh, we can, uh, have, uh, aye.
Aye.
We have two invoices from Graves for the site visit reports that we looked at this evening, uh, with solar project on Oxford Ave, in the amount of one hundred ninety-eight dollars and twelve cents. And for the review of the, um, J D and D project at twenty-four Oxford Ave, eight hundred fifty-two dollars and seven cents.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion that we, um, have Mr., or actually have, uh, Bill? Because we already gave you the commission-
Yes, I will sign it if you approve.
Yeah, so if we just vote those two payments, payments to those vouchers to Graves Engineering for the site visits on the solar, uh, solar field on Oxford Ave, and the construction site on, oh, they're both on Oxford Ave.
Yep.
J D and D on Oxford Ave, both of them on Oxford Ave, so if somebody would like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to pay the vouchers on Oxford Ave Solar and on Oxford Ave twenty-four.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, um, Mr. Shinaki?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Durgan?
Aye.
Mr. Wetrova?
Aye.
Myself, Guy Horn, aye, so that's unanimous, you can go ahead and pay those.
Okay, good.
Those are, those are all coming out of the escrow accounts anyways, yeah.
Did you sign the minutes? Did we pass around copies of the minutes to sign?
We did not pass around minutes, so we should do that, I have a copy here we can sign, and if somebody has a whole copy, oh, you have two copies there?
That's just one.